This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the Attorney General Andrew Dawson here by Fulton Wardens. This evening, the City Council members, staff, mayor, administrator, need to hear about a discussion made important decisions for the betterment of our community and citizens. We are so grateful for their service and dedication to our city. We ask your protection now for all first responders, city and county, including police, fire, particularly tonight, committing a Jacob Carter as a fire inspector. Now, that will be a very special day for our fire department, the fire insurance department, the ambulance, the CMTs, hospital staff, and all of these wonderful people who serve us 24/7 on at their home peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which thousands have fought and died and greatly preserved these 247 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all military and civilians serving today, here and throughout the world, protecting our way of life, keeping us safe from threats without and sound from within. And now as we leave the seating, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this is praise in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Representatives to the flag of the United States of America and to their brother, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, Joe Rogan.
Robinson.
Here.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster's absent and Bliss's absent.
Okay, we'll begin with the opening of the public hearing regarding the annexation petition received by Midwest Lannings LLC, the property owner of Montam drive and Cambridge Drive. We'll open that public hearing. If you have any public comments, you please step to the microphone here. You have three minutes to state your name and your address when you speak in favor of the matter. Okay, we'll begin with the opening of the public hearing regarding the annexation petition received by Midwest Lannings LLC, the property owner of Montam drive and Cambridge drive. We'll open that public hearing. If you have any public comments, you please step to the microphone here. You have three minutes to state your name and your address when you speak in favor of the matter. Have you heard of public comments? We'll go ahead and close the hearing. Uh, first, we have a, uh, we don't have any of our service awards here this evening, so we'll go ahead and skip over to our special award presentation. She's one of the articles. Members of the council, uh, Jacob Carter came to us through our Fire Line Two program, wanted to be a firefighter who was better suited as an inspector. Um, he has done a lot in his short tenure with the fire department, uh, got an inspector, got a D and P, get all those things. Uh, if you've noticed, he's now also heading up, uh, heading up a telerun contest for fire department, for fire department. He is also spearheading our first open house and fire program that we had since the building was brand new. So we were trying to put that together to be a spearheading act. He's also working on the dedication. His ultimate goal is to make the call then doctor. Uh, I mean, we'll be getting into PhD in the next few years to, uh, in merc service, that correct, fireworks, fire emergency management. His wife is here to defend, um, uh, with that, uh, oh, you got it. So there you go. Mr. Speaker, may I ask? Next item on our agenda is approval for previous session's minutes, council meeting in August 21st, 2023, July 1st, in discussion. Chairman Irvin, Chairman Becker, all those fellows in council. Now we have the, uh, we'll call standing committees, our first inspiring administration, Chair and Warfield, yes. Four items on my report line, first, Shannon, our human resources director of all the city committees, been working with our workers' compensation insurance carrier, to get a grant named as an appreciation statement for our employees. The total signed award has been identified within word tracks about road crews or public safety personnel working in line with. This signed award is also capable of changing fees of motorism to a longer slowdown of cost. The grant award is $10,000 and approved its award for the Buffalo Upcoming Downtown will offset an additional $500. This will just be $3,120,000 covered from other regulations of sorts. To the council discussion regarding the item four, let me finish.
I understand all this session.
Actually, uh, we had a, uh, the police department did a, it was a quarter of a dime, a smaller one, and I believe that the grant took it down.
No, no, that was a different one.
That was a different one. But we still have it. It's, uh, much smaller than the case.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank staff for allowing me to give this grant to these, uh, people who are employees. All right, we have one resolution, three ordinances, do you think of this matter? Do you want me to read the first resolution?
Resolution 2046. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Chairman Becker. All those opposed. Now we're involved with the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this matter.
Order number 2023-162. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding personnel safety tollable board sign purchase.
Chairman Becker. All those opposed.
Order number 2023-162. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding personnel safety tollable board sign purchase.
Thank you. Will call please.
Bliss's absent, Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
And Foster's absent, so six yes, two yes.
Order passed. Do you want me to read the second ordinance?
Order number 2023-163. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a safety grant for a digital roadway sign.
Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Order number 2023-163. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a safety grant for a digital roadway sign.
Will call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent, Bliss's absent, six yes, two yes.
Order passed. Call for the reading of the third and final ordinance in relation to this matter.
Order number 2023-164. An ordinance approving and accepting a sales quote for the purchase of a digital roadway sign.
Thank you, reading. Thank you. Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Order number 2023-164. An ordinance approving and accepting a sales quote for the purchase of a digital roadway sign.
Will call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent, Bliss's absent, Robinson.
Yes.
Six yes, two yes.
Next item, the Navy's wireless directory has worked with the library board on the goal to raise and upgrade future servers upon $20,000 and $31,000. For section two dash five A T V, grant the board of trustees, lose control over expenditure on experience of the library funds. Therefore, certain amendments that would be meant to be approved for incorporation in the overall city plan. All right, any council instructions regarding this matter? Chairman Irvin, will call for the reading of the resolution in relation to this matter.
Resolution 2047. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed. Resolution passed. Call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this matter.
Order number 2023-165. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding library server upgrade.
Thank you, reading. Thank you. Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed. Would you pass?
Order number 2023-165. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding library server upgrade.
Will call please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent, Bliss's absent, Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Six yes, two yes.
Order passed. Call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter in the final.
Order number 2023-166. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for library server upgrade.
Thank you, reading. Thank you. Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed. Would you pass?
Order number 2023-166. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for library server upgrade.
Will call please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent, Bliss's absent, Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Six yes, two yes.
Order passed. State that you describe that the county collecting profits to essentially auction off the link of tax building. Often some of these properties have outstanding taxes in other lanes, a low rate of demolition to make that exceed the value of the property. Often some of these properties have owners that have abandoned or passed away and the heirs have no interest. Then once they've been completed, the title is made unsold. Often it is such that the city is making these properties for the sake of the surrounding area. In order to break the cycle, the city has purchased tax liens on some of these properties in the past. Some, tax in works with our legal department to clean up these files. The city has been selling products to developers or empty individuals. This year, the city purchased five properties that is described here. The lien is serviced for $22,333.10. One of the liens, the city lien, for $14,707.75. The city will receive this and not back, leaving the new investment at $8,223.35 for five million properties. Any council suggestions to purchase these properties in the past? Chairman Irvin, we have a resolution in order to reconsiderate the matter. We'll call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2048. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed. Order passed. Thank you, council. Call for the reading of the ordinance in relation to this matter.
Order number 2023-167. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding purchasing properties that pass county taxes.
Thank you, reading. Thank you. Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed. Would you pass?
Order number 2023-167. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding purchasing properties that pass county taxes.
Thank you. Will call please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent, Bliss's absent, Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Six yes, two yes.
Order passed. My time is called for resolution to support for the proposal from Ventral Industries for the redevelopment of Liberty Park Park. Liberty Park Park, 76 years senior house development that was originally built in the 1980s. The redevelopment of these units will be designed to create energy saving facilities for those handicapped or incapacitated and will be modernized today to go to. By attending to the needs of the fiscal year old property, they can deserve this type of assistance to the older that are on old age. Any council suggestions regarding this, this is a town level, uh, unentitled, but this, this just shows. This is strictly chose, this presidential, this state, the council, and the head of this project. So the buildings will take that, uh, to the state level, whatever their financial tax credit. So, and, uh, again, if we have the guys from the, uh, family, you know, the party, if you guys have any questions.
Again, I think that's the main.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Chad Pardo. I'm a real estate developer and a local housing. I've been doing it for five years and, uh, a lot of things over these years. Liberty Hambo has served this community very well for, uh, since 1987, for delivery themselves, mighty long for Hambo. But, uh, in over the years, it's shown, and not only we're going to, probably, hopefully, do a physical rehabilitation of the property, nearly a financial restructure also. Very competitive process. It's by known means, uh, should have been, uh, the biggest competition for the signs stay live every year. It's a one-time year competition. And, um, a resolution for the council with the, uh, very powerful same forest showed the community's passion. But, uh, anyway, the, 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 actually, I'm in front of you, there's, uh, there's some, a lot of talk, that originally the competition, like, in both, uh, and, uh, I use it quite a bit. Well, appreciate you coming down. This is, uh, first time in the question. Where, where are all the residents committed there now? Where would they be moved to? Very good question. Um, what I do on developments like this is to rehabilitate one half of the property, which would be, even if there is more than one first, we move those residents out. We would, uh, provide, we would give them free referrals to pick from. We would pay their, we'd get the sales down, we'd get the back end, we should totally hookups. They'll pay the same amount of rent that they're paying for, and the units, uh, and they'll supplement that if the loan on counters more. It's, uh, probably the toughest part of this entire endeavor. We've located hundreds and hundreds of families and acres and spans of the fair. Uh, I've been on these markets, and when it's only had to bring out another house, and someone will be able to walk out for six months. But, uh, we did, uh, a good job of making it comfortable and building room and everything else, to, I guess, as least as possible. So, we'll move half the residents off site, rehab one building, then we'll do a change from the other building to be rehabbed. And then the room comes back and then we gotta do walking in. I got, um, friends that did out there and, uh, they're kind. Huge work, show a job open and calm and, uh, and his sister will be very too passionate with these questions, and that's why I'm here. So, I need to do something that, that, or, I guess, to, you know, to make them understand. Sure, and it's, it's a very extensive area, uh, and, you know, the cabinets, doors, and the stagebacks, uh, this is, we have, and it should not be said to try and do that more than a resident. We've been doing this, uh, really good at that for, it's 23 years now, and, um, evidently, it's a, it's a process, so we'll, we'll be there for them, and everyone's happy, and it's, it's worth the pain. How many residents in each building? Each building has 13 units, and there were whatever departments, I remember, maybe, seven, maybe eight efficiency departments, rest for one residence. At this far household, uh, residents are 62 years of age or older. There are supporting services that the residents have had for a number of years. We're going to actively add new services and, uh, make sure that they'll be able to offer those services for, uh, many years. But that's a big part of the services for the residents and, uh, really, uh, all that, all of the block. There's a cost of the residents during the, we need to, and we have, uh, same budget. We all, we have a professional relocation company that can do that, and, uh, and we've got plenty of them, uh, I mean, the company has, it's a little part of, um, it's, uh, we do, uh, develop the resources out of San Diego. They did one, they did one, on, very similar to this, it's 167 units and 16 were built, and, uh, uh, they know what they're doing, and, uh, possibly we sit down, see if it's true.
I'm into the Department of Commerce, and it's very difficult to find how they march things forward, or we plan to reach out to the mutual experience of the, or will they tap the other town?
Yeah, good question. We have, uh, other, Tim Winkle just had, uh, seemed to have approved, look, based, these developments, and, uh, I think it's, I mean, he's going to think about writing their full name to be fitted with those, and everybody's exposed out of here, so, uh, you know, they may not move into his units, but if you figure out how the, or, or the units are, is related. So, kind of, it's, it's really good for this, if we make this happen on the first building. But, answer your question before pulling, um, let's see, recently I did, in 2014, you know, senior development, or, or, they're, I think, 15, 20, 30, something like that. And we were really, uh, studying that because of the small community, but we had no problems finding a housing for those residents. And what we found here typically made them walk through, and with relatives, and they were, they were, they, uh, uh, we, 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 all that, so we found a lot of, uh, we were very, uh, and it all worked out. I know it, uh, it seems impossible upfront, but, uh, really make these things work, and we had, and we don't pay as many as, uh, in paytime, 130, I think I was talking, but, um, it's, um, it all works. We, we have a lot of lead time on this, and a lot of notices to residents, and, uh, what's going on, uh, in, in the end, it's a process all along the way. I'm really cautious about giving too much information out of this state, I don't want, uh, this, and, 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 uh, maybe this is sure thing, although, uh, a lot of questions, and so it's, everybody now, uh, you know, if you do get any questions from the community about this, if they're looking there, they're gonna have to plug it, I think, uh, coordinate this, make sure that it works. What is the time, Ken?
Great question. Uh, applications are due in three weeks, and, uh, a little less than, uh, twenty seconds, and, uh, and M H T C, the sort of hospital electrician, will make a decision on the applications upon. Usually on the tenth of the December, uh, they have to take those, apparently, early in the December, so that, we can, or, or, a few hundred, we, some of these companies that are, uh, through the state line, in contact with M H T C for the year, through their allocation, tax credits, and, uh, federal work. Once that's all in place, then, um, environmental studies, uh, environmental studies, it's, uh, a lot of paper, we want to try to see, they, the quickest I've ever closed one is April of the following year, and lawless, and, uh, this time of year, we're still closing some of them, because of last year. Uh, this year is going to be on due date, on, on, uh, it makes you see, had extra funding last year, they were able to fund it, as usual. They'll probably be a hundred and twenty applications this year, stay wide, they thought that, I think, they're, uh, uh, last year. This year, there's not many resources, there was resources here to cover that, uh, drove up from last year, prior year. They'll probably, uh, they'll probably fund 17 to 20 this year, stay wide, with, including, same old state facility, one of these, uh, about a hundred and fifty dollars in everywhere, but, um, they allocate a certain amount of resources to rural areas, which they are good, so, um, it's progress, but, uh, I appreciate this more.
Any questions, if you have matters from any council member, help, uh, support for your.
Uh, the resolution is filed, uh, and, uh, that, uh, others can get, helpful, helps with the, letters from other, uh, Christians in the city, who, who, that probably have some work, letters are considered.
Any other specific questions?
I've got business cards, anyone wants to get a call, that process, that I can, uh, I think that, uh, 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 uh. And, uh, my cell phone number's on there, and you can, uh, so, anyone wants to get a call, and what we do, we, uh, local contractors, a lot of, sort of, contractors, and, uh, I don't know, big size, we got a lot of, uh, little sets, or, um, local contractors, we work, uh, how, things are, hold up, let's see, like, the sign language. Yeah, it's, uh, it's a, it's a great, and, um, these, um, this is a space company that, uh, illegal use on all of these, uh, housing. I thought it came on the way up here, it's, uh, it's very similar to that, I was saying, it was probably up here a year ago, it's, was, uh, last year. So, uh, it's a great market here, um, but again, we're focused on preserving senior housing, and, um, it's a little bit different place than, um, creating senior houses, mostly, but it's a good market here for senior. So that is a great place, uh.
Mr. Oldham, I have a sense of, uh, we will, we will, uh, uh. Well, do I have any further, I will call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2049. Resolution to support for the proposal from Ventral Industries LLC for the redevelopment of Liberty and Campbell Apartments located at 1400 Liberty Park Boulevard in the City of Missouri.
Chairman Becker.
Aye.
All those opposed. Resolution passed. All I have on, I think, term one, the next year of community development, and I'm not sure what you just bought.
And, uh, we have full island, nice, fresh, and being, uh, a bit for the aerial photography. Since 2007, the city has partnered with the plan to share indoor development, and use geographic information, which is, uh, G I M mapping. As per and grid defined by the party in 2011, the county has to provide access to bad mode, it creates for such as possible, uh, then, gradually, corporate, on, connections, other bases, etc. The city is to provide access to the layer degree, and use aerial photography to help count. Such aerials encounter imagery, because they never do use. City entries for six-year grade is the current vendor, technically, was providing the data from the pipe in 2023. In order to continue this program, some new projects, and use that data in two thousand and twenty-four. And in late, keep it open for, also for the city G I X, or they are, it's, it's, it's a, a, a.
One from our current vendor. Eagleview aerial photography services bid two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for three flights over the next six years. Also CBO Lake requested a bid alternate to provide one foot increment, uh, contours over the imagery for the two thousand twenty-four pipe, and the bid came in at sixty-four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents to add to this layer of data. The contours were last updated in two thousand and eleven, and this information is greatly beneficial when planning development, particularly for the sewer department and groundwater, as well as for developers, who staff recommends acceptance, to acceptance of the bid, including the alternate for contour lines with the two thousand twenty-four data. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, I noticed that, uh, Eagleview was the only one that, that bid on this, like, does the city pay for the whole thing, the county do?
Yeah, but, that's basically the agreement, is that we provide the, the aerial photography as well as the, the, uh, the layers that we create, such as the sewer and the, and water and those kinds of things. And then, um, uh, and then the county provides all of the rest of the layers and the, and the base, and then access, they, they keep the database and provides access to us, so, once might be with that, the other, did I say that correctly, Tim?
Any other comments, Scott? Have you heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one sixty-eight. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri, approving and accepting a bid from Eagleview Aerial Photography Services for Color Aerial Photography. Second reading.
All those in favor? Motion passes, oh, all those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one sixty-eight. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri, approving and accepting a bid from Eagleview Aerial Photography Services for Color Aerial Photography. Final passage.
Okay. Rule call, please. Cross. Yes. Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes. Uh, ordinance passes.
Our second item is Main Street Program Agreement. The city's downtown revitalization program was awarded the designation of an affiliate Main Street program. Main Street America, through the State Chapter of Missouri Main Street Connection, provides a proven trademarked approach to downtown revitalization that includes materials, training, guidance, and support. The staff recommends approval of an agreement outlining the conditions on the use of these materials and the roles and responsibilities associated with the participation in these trademarked programs.
Okay. Any council discussion regarding this item?
Now, this has become quite a vital program for our downtown, as, as well as, I don't know, uh, I mean, just three years ago, you wouldn't be able to tell where we are today, but, I, I think I'm.
Any further? Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one sixty-nine. An ordinance authorizing Missouri Main Street Program Agreement. Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one sixty-nine. An ordinance authorizing Missouri Main Street Program Agreement. Final passage.
Rule call, please. Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes.
Our third item tonight is amending Article Two of Chapter Twelve of City Code for Mobile Food Vendor License and Temporary Business License for Special Events. The current code requires a mobile food vendor to obtain a license that includes the term of from June first through May thirty-first, or any portion thereof. Since the expiration is in the middle of a prime food bin, food, mobile food business, this creates a hardship on vendors that want to serve the whole season but may not want to, to the season before or after. Therefore, staff recommends changing the term for a mobile food vendor to a four-year from the date of issuing. Staff further recommends that we add a provision to obtain a special event permit to allow an organizer to hold special events throughout the year and invite other vendors to such events. These permits will also be for one year from the date of issuance and include provisions for them to ensure the proper licensing and sales tax compliance is maintained for the invited vendors.
Any council discussion regarding these orders?
We have invited checking, I think, in terms of the industry status.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's part of the checking, I guess. Having heard nothing further, call for the reading of the first ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri, amending Article Two of Chapter Twelve, Division Nine, the code of the city of Soudia, Missouri, to change the duration of mobile food vendor license. Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri, amending Article Two of Chapter Twelve, Division Nine, of the code of the city of Soudia, Missouri, to change the duration of mobile food vendor license. Final passage.
Rule call, please. Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, six yes, two yes. Ordinance passes. Call for the reading of the second ordinance, in relation to this.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-one. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri, amending Article Two of Chapter Twelve of Code of the City of Soudia, Missouri, to add subdivision three for temporary business licenses for special event organizers and vendors. Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-one. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri, amending Article Two of Chapter Twelve of the Code of the City of Soudia, Missouri, to add subdivision three for temporary business licenses for special event organizers and vendors. Final passage.
Rule call, please. Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, six yes, two yes.
And our final, final item tonight is a budget amendment for building maintenance positions part-time to full-time. Upon the resignation of the part-time employee that was focused on ground maintenance in the downtown area, staff reassessed the effectiveness of this position. The ass- assessment resulted in the determination that, to fulfill the intended functions, the consistency of effort is better served by a full-time employee. Likewise, any overflow of available staff could certainly be used in the facilities management department, as more of these duties can always be brought hand-held. Therefore, Mayor Dawson and the staff recommend a budget amendment to bring this position from a part-time to a full-time position.
Any council discussion regarding this item? Having heard none, call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution two thousand fifty. The resolution of the city council of the city of Soudia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve, please. Rule, or, all those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-two. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding increasing building maintenance position from part-time to full-time. Final, uh, second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-two. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding increasing building maintenance position from part-time to full-time. Final passage, please.
Rule call, please. Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, and Robinson?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes. All right, ordinance passes, thank you, council.
That concludes the community development.
All right. Thank you, best chairman of the office. Uh, next we have public works, Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, sir. We have five items tonight in the public works committees. The first item is the reallocation of the current year funds for upgrades to public works conference room. Uh, one of them, kind of happy to see, uh, they tried to get some funds into the budget , uh, last year to upgrade for the conference room, we weren't able to utilize it the best we could, uh, the other two, uh, nor were they equipped as the other two, uh, conference rooms in, uh, in the building. So, uh, by allocating the funds, we were able to get a television, whiteboards, we were able to get telephone, anything just equipment needed to utilize it. So this will consist of a resolution and, and ordinance.
All right, any council discussion regarding the matter before you? Having heard none, call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution two thousand fifty-one. The resolution of the city council of the city of Soudia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Resolution passes. Call for the reading of the ordinance in relation to this matter?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-three. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding public works conference room upgrades. Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-three. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding public works conference room upgrades. Final passage, please.
Rule call, please. Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Six yes, two yes. Ordinance passes, thank you, council.
Uh, second item I have tonight, if you recall in the previous council session, we directed Burnson Mack to, uh, to any of the plans for, uh, housing with turbo blowers that will need for the rehabilitation of central wastewater plants. Uh, we need the items to be housed, uh, so this is, uh, approval of purchase of blowers from central, for the central wastewater treatment plants.
All right. City council discussion regarding this expenditure? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-four. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of blowers for the central wastewater treatment plant. Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-four. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of blowers for the central wastewater treatment plant. Final passage, please.
Rule call, please. August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes. Ordinance passes.
Third item I have tonight is since the approval of the bid to the rehabilitation of well number eleven, it was discovered that wiring is needed to be replaced, and this wasn't included in the original quote. So emergency purchase provisions were put in place, so we must approve the increase in the budget to cover the costs. This will consist of a resolution and an ordinance.
All right. Any council discussion regarding the budget amendment?
Thank you for that quick action.
Having heard none, call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution two thousand fifty-two. The resolution of the city council of the city of Soudia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes, now we'll call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-five. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding purchase of electrical cable for well pump repair. Second reading, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-five. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding purchase of electrical cable for well pump repair. Final passage.
Rule call, please. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes. Ordinance passes, thank you, council.
Very much. The initial, and my fourth item, it is a budget amendment and contract amendment with Burnson Mack for Prairie Hollow Development, sorry about that. The initial design for the extension of water and sewer mains for Prairie Hollow Development included a plan to use the right-of-way for the Katy Trail. It was later learned that the state would require complete encasement for any pipes running in this right-of-way, causing this plan not to be feasible. Therefore, staff recommends a change order to the design contract to add redesigned services for an alternate route. The cost of these added services is forty thousand three hundred dollars. This will consist of a resolution and two ordinances.
Any council discussion regarding this?
Billy, this has been a project for a while, hasn't it? Do we know the timeline on this project?
Um, I don't know, help me out, Chris, or, as far as the design is, uh, probably another couple months now with the redesign. And then construction's probably twelve-month construction?
Anything further, council? All right, having heard none, call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution two thousand fifty-three. The resolution of the city council of the city of Soudia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes, now we'll call for the reading of the first ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-six. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding redesign of water and wastewater lines Prairie Hollow. Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-six. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding redesign of water and wastewater lines Prairie Hollow. Final passage.
Rule call, please. Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes. Ordinance passes, all right. Call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-seven. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to task order number one for redesign of water and wastewater lines. Second reading, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-seven. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to task order number one for redesign of water and wastewater lines. Final passage, please.
Rule call, please. Foster is absent, Bliss is absent, Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes. Ordinance passes.
Final item I have tonight is one of just routine maintenance or routine items, it's an annexation agreement, uh, with the house, lost my place, I apologize, uh, with the house, uh, property listed at one sixty-five degree.
All right. Any council discussion regarding this? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one seventy-eight. An order, ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement connection to the city of Soudia's water distribution system. Second reading.
Please. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one seventy-eight. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to the city of Souda's water distribution system. Final passage.
Take it. Rule call please.
Bliss is absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
And Foster is absent. Six yes, two yes. That's all I have, Mark.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Oldham. But next we have public safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
I have four items. First is to amend the school resource officer agreement. With, is there an amendment to that, chief?
This is the, uh, same contract that we did last year. It's just renewing it. Um, so the amendment is changing the dates to the current next year.
Okay.
Any other council discussion regarding this? All right. Call for the ordinance authorizing and accepting the amendment.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one seventy-nine. An ordinance authorizing and accepting an amendment to the school resource officer cooperative agreement. Take a reading.
Take it. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Callers opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one seventy-nine. An ordinance authorizing and accepting an amendment to the school resource officer cooperative agreement. Final passage.
Take it. Rule call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss is absent. Six yes, two yes.
Ordinance passes.
The next is the fire, is a grant for the firefighters to help us purchase some radios. Would you like to address that, sir, please?
Good evening again. Um, earlier on this year, last year, uh, we applied for an assistance to firefighters' grants. Most of you remember that's the same grant that we got our air packs on, uh, three years ago. Um, we applied for radios and, and the, it is a very competitive grant cycle, um, and we were awarded a hundred and one thousand dollars through the AFG, nine thousand of which we have to, we, we had ten percent of what, of what we, we were awarded. So, um, with that grant, it will basically, uh, finish the radio needs for the department with our current deployment. So, a hundred and one thousand, I think ninety-one for nine, I think is what we decided in council meeting. We're giving up nine for ninety-one, so.
Any other questions, council? All right. We have two resolutions and one ordinance in relation to this matter, so we'll call for the reading of the first resolution.
Resolution two thousand fifty-four. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Souda, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024. Motion to approve.
Take it. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Callers opposed? Resolution passes. We'll call for the reading for the, uh, the ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one eighty. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding fire department radio equipment purchase. Take a reading.
Take it. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Callers opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one eighty. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding fire department radio equipment purchase. Final passage.
Take it. Rule call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss is absent. And Robinson?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes.
Ordinance passes. Now we will call for the final resolution in relation to this matter.
Resolution two thousand fifty-five. A resolution authorizing acceptance of an assistance to firefighters' grant. Motion to approve.
Take it. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Callers opposed? Resolution passes.
We have a request from the police department for destruction of some records.
Uh, all I need for that is a, a motion, a second?
Motion to approve.
Take it. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Callers opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council.
The, uh, city code on the regulation of keeping animals friendly, would you like to speak to the changes, please?
Thank you. Um, as most of you are aware, we've had quite a few animal complaints over the last year, but prior to that as well, it's been building, there's been animals running at large, animals fighting. Um, our primary job in animal control is to provide public safety. We also want to provide, um, animal welfare, but we need to find a way to provide both of those. And I think that by, um, rewriting the ordinances that we had in place, that will help, um, our animal control, our shelter, and our prosecutor, um, accomplish all of those goals. Do you guys have any questions about it, um, about any of the changes?
Any questions, council?
Thank you.
All right. Having heard no further discussion, we will call for the reading of the ordinance amending the code.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one eighty-one. An ordinance of the city of Souda amending the city code regarding the regulation of animals. Take a reading.
Take it. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Callers opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one eighty-one. An ordinance of the city of Souda amending the city code regarding the regulation of animals. Final passage.
Take it. Rule call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss is absent. Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Six yes, two yes.
Ordinance passes. All right. Now we have the, uh, liquor licenses up next on the agenda. Call for the reading of liquor licenses, Jerry. City clerk Meyer?
We have one new and four renewals tonight. New license for Garrett Volker doing business with Volker's Eatery and Pub at ten twenty-one South Limit for a special event for mouse race events, State Fair Community College Gym on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, and renewal for Erica Eisenminger doing business as Ivory Grill LLC at three seventeen South Ohio for liquor by the drink. Mike Emery doing business as CBS Pharmacy number one oh three oh five, one hundred East Broadway for packaged liquor, Sunday sales and taste testing. Tom Aderman doing business as Best Western State Fair Inn at thirty-one twenty South Limit for liquor by the drink, and Kathy Getz doing business as Break Time number thirty-one sixty-seven at one oh one Rebar Road for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block.
Take it. Callers in favor?
Aye.
Callers opposed? Thank you, council. Now we have the, uh, missing items from the city council, city administrator. Does anyone want to talk about?
City council has our Missouri Municipal League, uh, conference this weekend. That's where we'll be, and we'll learn new ways and new information on how to better serve the citizens of Souda.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Council doesn't mind, Chief Irwin has an announcement he would like to make, so, and ask Chief Irwin to come up.
Well, good to see you guys again. It's been a minute. Um, so, as many of you know, over the last few years, we've done a lot of equipment upgrades through the department. You guys have given us money to equipment and, and reserve engines and all of those things. So, uh, over the last few years, we, um, have acquired our first hydraulic equipments and our hydraulic equipment that we have for cutting open cars. What this has done is given us what our spare set of equipment is now, is now the spare to the spare. So we have a set of hydraulic tools and Rams that we no longer currently use. So we tried to put that on our GovDeals site and tried to sell them to try to get some reimbursement for them. We got no interest in those. So nobody put in a bid for the, any of those. So there's a few dollars in scrap from what we could have if we wanted to scrap it. So what I've done is I've sat down, um, looked at the community volunteer fire departments within our jurisdiction and reside inside of Pettis County. Um, what I would like to do is, or what we're planning to do is that equipment is really hoarding for us because we have additional equipment. We would like to donate that equipment to the city of Green Ridge Community Fire Department. They are a completely volunteer fire department, um, take donations only. They are on a tax-supported district or, um, uh, have any fiscal funds coming in. So the equipment is, um, serviceable. Um, does, uh, one of their pieces of equipment's gonna need a set of O-rings in it, but it is serviceable, so we'd like to donate that equipment to the city of Green Ridge Community Fire Department, um, with your blessing, of course.
Did you also mention that, uh, you have a couple firefighters that live there?
Oh, so I've got a couple, a couple of my firefighters live in that area, so they are going to be willing to go into the community fire department, show those, that fire department how to use that equipment.